We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll begin with a roll call.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Nyman, here. Mrs. McWherter.
Here.
Mr. Updugrove.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mrs. Denon.
Here.
Mr. Foose.
Here.
All are present.
Next, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. The two of our people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justness for all.
Alright, that'll have to do for silence for this evening. Alright, so next is announcement of previous executive session. The Board of School Directors met on the following dates, an executive session. August 25th, 2020 was 45 minutes on personnel. And on September 22nd, 2020, the Board met for 60 minutes also on personnel. Next, we will move to public comment, and I was informed there was no one signed up this evening. So we can jump ahead to the approval of minutes. McWherter, Ms. McWherter moves. Mr. Updugrove, seconds. Any comments or questions on these minutes? Alright, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff. Ms. Dieroff. I'll come back to Ms. Dieroff. Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mrs. Denon.
Yes.
Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Mrs. Denon, are you back? Mrs. Dieroff.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dieroff. Can you unmute her, Mrs. Kincaid? I am looking for her. She's on the last row. Yeah, I see her, but... Oh, okay. Let me see if I can help. Can she just give me a thumbs up? Okay, there she is. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dieroff.
This getting old that I keep getting thrown off.
The motion passes 9-0.
Alright, next, we have... For the report of the President, we have a information on the PSBA officer vote. I'm just gonna switch screens. Alright, so the Board has... The Board has an obligation to vote on Pennsylvania School Board Association leadership. And each Board member has previously received the link to the state... The slate of candidates, and the following candidates need to be voted on at this evening's meeting. I believe in the past, we've... It's been done a couple of different ways. I don't know how we want to do this tonight. If we just want to go around. Or if we want to...
Mr. Foose.
Yes.
As the PSBA representative, do you want me to just kind of highlight, or you just want everyone to vote, assuming that they've done their own research and looked at the... And looked at the bios? Or do you want me to weigh in?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You want me to weigh in?
No.
Um, yeah.
Are you serious, Mrs. Dieroff, or you're being sarcastic?
I'm serious. I did my own research. They gave us... They gave us the bios.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just asking. No problem.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the offer. We'll go ahead and I think a couple of these are just one candidate, and for the ones where there's multiple, as was just said, hopefully, hopefully, people have looked into the background for these folks. So we have one person for President, so the option is to either select this individual or to abstain. And...
Do you want a motion made for each category, or how do you want to do it?
I don't know if motions were made for these.
I know Mr. Sultanic is on.
Okay.
And perhaps he can give you some guidance? Oh, he said he... We won't hear him. I think we need to bring him into on the panelist. He might have been... There he is. He's been removed. Mrs. Kincaid, Mr. Sultanic is on the attendees' side. Can you bring him over to the panelists? Okay, Mr. Sultanic, you are now part of the panelists, so you can speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. What I was going to say, we have a number of options on how to address these positions. It seems to me that since individual Board members may have done their own independent research on this, that you simply go through each one of the individuals, and somebody makes a motion. Or, and you have balloting on most of the issues. Now, I don't have... Let me see if I have the names before me. I can see them. Okay. So the first one is the President-elect. There really is nobody opposing that individual. So that motion is fairly easy. The Treasurer is only one individual. So we could theoretically have an initial motion to accept the President-elect and the Treasurer unless somebody wants to abstain. And then, on the others where we have multiple voting, we can then go through each Board member and ballot those individuals.
Yeah, let's start off with the, with the easy ones. Can we get a motion for the President-elect and the Treasurer roles to accept the individuals that are interested in those positions?
Dieroff, move.
Brophy, second.
So I guess we'll just do a roll call on accepting of those individuals.
Mr. Brophy.
Accept.
Ms. Nyman.
Okay.
Ms. Nyman, did you vote?
I said yes.
Thank you. Mrs. McWherter.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Accept.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mrs. Denon.
Yes.
Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
The next suggestion would be that there would be balloting for the Vice President position, whether it be Sabrina Backer or Daniel O'Keefe. And just go to each Board member and ask them who they're going to vote for.
Do we need a motion to get that process started, or can we just...
You can just do it right now and just say that this is your balloting for the Vice President position.
Okay. So we'll go, I guess, do we... Sorry, Mrs. Kincaid, do you mind facilitating by just going person by person and asking their...
Not at all, Mr. Foose.
Thank you.
Mr. Brophy.
O'Keefe.
Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Ms. Nyman, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mrs. McWherter, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mr. Updugrove, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mr. Hemingway, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mrs. Dieroff, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mrs. Hogan, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mrs. Denon, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Mr. Foose, Backer or O'Keefe?
O'Keefe.
Okay, Mr. O'Keefe, I'm sorry. O'Keefe wins 9-0.
And then you could drop down to the sectional advisors between Amy Koenig, Brian Petula, and Andrea Kristop.
On, on those, are they, are they representing each of the regions listed behind their name? Or are they actually competing against one another?
They're not competing against one another. There's different sectional advisors, and we're, we're actually in Section 8. So I'm not even sure if we vote on them, to be quite honest with you, but I don't know.
So I wasn't clear on that.
You could just make a motion to acknowledge and approve the sectional advisors as presented.
Okay. Would somebody like to make that motion? Ms. McWherter?
I'll take that motion.
I'll second. Denon, second.
Second by Ms. Denon. Alright, so a roll call to accept the sectional advisors as listed.
Okay. Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes, sorry.
Mrs. Denon.
Yes.
Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
The PSBA Insurance Trust is an optional vote. The way I understand it is the Board can select up to two individuals, and there's two individuals proposed, and if the Board's comfortable with voting on this optional matter, it would be a motion to approve the two individuals as listed. And if you want to add that together with the PSBA Board Secretaries Forum, it's also two individuals, Stephen Scrocky and Tracy Long. So the Board could move to recommend the two individuals for the PSBA Insurance Trust and the PSBA Board Secretaries Forum Steering Committee as presented.
Alright, looking for motion on that, Ms. McWherter.
I think a motion.
Mr. Updugrove, seconds. So we'll move to vote on those two packaged together.
Okay. Mr. Brophy.
Abstain.
Ms. Nyman.
I don't know, I was hit on voting for one. Um... I guess I'll abstain then.
Mrs. McWherter.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
I'm gonna abstain also.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mrs. Denon.
Yes.
Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Seven yes, two abstention.
Thank you very much for walking us through that, Mr. Sultanic.
Well...
Okay, that concludes the President's report, so we'll move to the Secretary's report.
No report.
Next, we have the listeners' report.
No report.
Alright, the next item that we have is an item for discussion. This will be a discussion about delinquent tax collection.
Mr. Foose, I believe that Mrs. Dieroff had some comments about that. Mrs. Dieroff?
Yes, I would like to have the Board discuss not turning... To follow Act 75 of 2020 and giving the people this year some extra time to pay their taxes without being turned over to the outrageous place we were turning them over to, which charges an extra 33 1/3% after all other options are, are tried. And I would also like to discuss getting rid of that attorney's office and figure another way out to collect our taxes. I don't know. We used to have the county collect them. I don't know if the county still does. I don't know what other school districts are doing, but the 33 1/3% that we... That is charged to the people that, that get turned over for collection, to me, is outrageous. But I do want to say, the school district does not get any of that 33 1/3%. So I would be interested to know what other Board members think and how they feel.
And if I may interrupt, Mrs. Dieroff and the rest of the Board, Ms. Nicola does have some information. I did ask her to be prepared a little bit to speak to some of this. We weren't exactly sure what the conversation would be, so if you wouldn't mind.
I can provide the Board a little background on E&amp;M Law Group, which handles the delinquent taxes. It was approved by the Board, the agreement, on December 13th, 2011. The agreement commenced on March 1st, 2012. That's when they initially started collecting the delinquent taxes. The contract has automatic renewal language in that it automatically renews each year for another year unless notified 9 days in advance that we don't wish to renew.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear. It's all mush.
Yeah, it's very hard to... This better?
Yes.
Okay. So if you didn't catch that, it was originally approved in 2011. They started collecting in 2012, and the agreement renews annually thereafter, unless we notify them 90 days in advance that we don't wish to renew.
Okay.
Coming across.
You can hear better without the...
Yeah.
Do you need one more time repeat it, Ms. Nyman?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
I will tell you that in my experience, the rate of 33 1/3% does seem high for a delinquent tax collector. There are a number of other entities that do do delinquent tax collections. A lot of our neighboring districts use another firm by the name of Portnoy Law Associates. They have a different structure in their fees that they don't charge an upfront 33 1/3% of the collection amount. They charge flat fees to, at different points throughout the collection process, and really try and encourage the taxpayers to either come up with an installment agreement or initiate a hardship agreement. They really try and make it beneficial for the taxpayer. They keep people in their homes, and they are very effective in their collection efforts. And I think the fees, we have analysis done, but I believe the fees that are to taxpayers that would experience, would experience under that agreement would be much less than what they're currently facing under the E&amp;M Law Group.
Okay, I got half of what you said. But also, besides the fees, we also have to watch what we're paying for, because we didn't pay anything. I think all the... The finances were on the Law Group to pay out. So you have to watch, you have to compare apples to apples if the other firm you're talking about, how, how they do it. If they pay all the fees, legal fees, or if we pay them, or whatever. That's number one. Number two, does the county still collect?
I believe the county still does collect, and the county... Mr. Sultanic, if you could correct me if I'm incorrect. I believe the county, even if they are not doing the collection, still receives 5% of that collection that E&amp;M Law Group would be charging.
Right.
That is correct. And to the best of my knowledge, the county is still collecting. When this was originally proposed, the view was that this would be more effective and that we would get our money sooner than when, if we relied upon the county for collection, when this was originally proposed. And we're familiar with Portnoy. We have many districts that have Portnoy as a collector. But my question is more legal than it is anything else. I heard Ms. Dieroff spoke about the possible termination of our current collection firm. I just don't know. I have not looked at that contract right now to assess what the termination provisions would be. Presuming that since it is an evergreen contract that renews from year to year, that we would have to provide advance notice in advance of next year to terminate at the conclusion of this year. But I don't, I can't answer that question without looking at the contract.
Hey, thank you. How about, out of the Brooks County schools, how many of them still use the county? Do we know that?
We do not know that offhand, but there is a Brooks County Business Managers Meeting this week, and I can pose that question.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, can we talk now about the Act 75 of 2020? To see how many people would be in favor of extending the time for the taxpayers, excuse me, to pay the property tax without getting turned over? Or is that going to violate the contract we have with the other law firm?
Mr. Sultanic, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not... I don't believe that Act 75... I think it may be too late for us. Just give me a moment to address Act 75. I know our business manager may have had contact with one of my partners who indicated that it was too late to make the modification right now for tax collection, and I just want to confirm it under Act 75.
Oh, I didn't realize there was a time.
I'm pretty sure there is.
I didn't see any, but...
Okay, I'm checking. I'm checking as we speak.
Thank you.
Just one suggestion for folks in the room. If you're not speaking, if you're, if you can put yourself on mute, I think that's leading to some of the echo that we have in here. And while Mr. Sultanic, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, it looks like provisions of Section 10F should apply to school districts of the first class, school districts and cities of the second class A and all others, okay, all other school districts. And it said, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, for the school year that begins July 1, 2020, the Board of School Directors of a school district made by majority vote by resolution extend the time period that qualifies taxpayers for a discount or waive a penalty for failure to make timely payment of such, of any such taxes on real estate charged against them, or both. So our options are to extend the time period for a discount. Now, when was our discount over?
Did we extend that? No, we didn't extend that.
No, we did not. Now, the discount period is already over, if I'm not mistaken, is it not?
I think in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was that option. So it's already arguably too late, or waive a penalty for failure to make timely payment of any such taxes on real estate charged against them, or both. Now, the penalty could be theoretically waived by the Board, I think, but...
We did, earlier this year, make, make an extension to four...
No, that has nothing to do with this.
Didn't? Um, I just, yeah, what Mrs. McWherter was just starting to say, what did we do? What, what was, what was, I thought we took one step to actually help the taxpayers. So what was that step?
We added another month to pay.
Right.
Okay, so we, didn't we make, instead of three payments, we had four installments? I thought that's what we did.
Yes, that's what we did.
Yeah, we added another month.
Okay.
But this one here, if I read it right, takes you to June of 21.
But we may have already imposed the higher than the discount number. So it looks to me that our only option right now, now that the discount period has lapsed, unless we want to go back, and I don't know what this is going to mean in terms of actual collection. And yes, it might impact what we're doing with the delinquent tax collectors, and what we turned over and what we didn't, but... It looks like we could waive the penalty for failure to make timely payment of such taxes, but I don't know what that means economically for the district.
Wouldn't that be, would that we still don't get any extra? Because it went already to delinquents?
But if we waive any penalty, that means that individuals would just simply wait to file to the last minute, and then we lose whatever interest there would be on that sum of money, too. And...
Mr. Sultanic, I believe, went right before Mrs. Pitts left. I think when we had this original discussion about this, she, she was suggesting that that was not a good idea to waive the penalty, but the better option was to extend it another month. And I think we did have a discussion, although I don't think she had the hard data, but we did have a discussion that the school district does work with anyone who needs some help. And as, on a case-by-case basis, we actually will, will work with people to make sure that, you know, they don't lose their home and they are on a payment, a payment plan without a lot of penalties. So I know that... So um I know that um through some personal experience that I had helped someone out in Potts Grove with. Uh, that's, that's what they, the Potts Grove School District did with their collection group. So I don't know if we do something similar. I don't know all the ins and outs. But I thought there was a discussion um around this last time. That be, that we decided not to waive the penalty because we wanted to collect the taxes. But that there there were some options for our taxpayers who truly had um, who who had a hardship.
No, we didn't change any dates.
Right.
So if they didn't pay it, we we have options, but they they have to make the payments on time. And if they can't do that, we don't work with them to extend them or change them.
That wasn't my understanding.
Mr. Sultanic, are we going to be in violation with the E L M law firm if we do this?
I can't answer that question without reviewing the agreement.
Thank you.
The district does offer taxpayers that become delinquent as of January first. They do offer an installment agreement with those taxpayers. Um, that spreads the delinquent tax amount over six months. There's a twenty-five dollar fee, I believe, and it's a nine percent interest um charge that is charged to the delinquent taxpayer. It's after, it's either if they do not um initiate an installment agreement with the district. Um, or they fail to make payments under that agreement. At that point, we would then turn it over to E and M Law Group. So we don't turn over as other districts do effective January first. We'd um try and do the collections um in-house through an installment, reaching an installment agreement with the taxpayer. Um, and it gives them six months to catch up. Six months might seem like a limited period of time. The six months allows people to catch up and not put themselves in a further burden. Once those new tax bills would come out again in July. Um, if you would push it out to a year, that could generally um could create a further some burden to somebody once they get that new tax bill. So the district does, in fact, while they use this delinquent tax collector, they take a step first. And offer up an installment agreement with the delinquent taxpayers. Um, in an effort to um help them pay that over the next six months before it would be turned over then to the E and M Law Group. And Mr. Sultanic, we can send over a copy of the agreement with E and M. So you can um speak to like the termination provisions if the board wishes to go that route.
Sure, I could certainly look at it, even if you want to email it. It's to the extent you have access to it uh right now, I could certainly look at it under the circumstances. But uh Ms. Denon's discussion on the subject was we did have a discussion about extending the month. And Ms. Pitts did have, uh, I do recall, expressed her views about waiving the penalty under the statute.
I believe this Nyman has a question.
With this year being uh totally out of the ballpark. Would it be possible in that sixth month period that you were talking about? Before we would turn it over? Instead of putting that penalty on, could we waive that penalty?
You mean the twenty-five dollar penalty?
No, she said about nine percent.
Currently a nine percent um interest charge. Um, Mr. Sultanic, could you speak to whether or not the board could um waive that?
We have a resolution that I recall many years ago, we adopted on our. On that resolution that provided for an installment payment. My inclination is that there were certain advertising requirements uh in that resolution. I don't believe that there is necessarily an authority to waive that requirement. But I'd have to look into that also. But I don't believe on its face, there is an authorization to waive the nine percent. And are we waiving the nine percent for everybody this year? If you want to go on an installment basis. And I don't know what that would mean in terms of cash flow and income to the district, even assuming we could do it.
Is that nine percent just a one time and done, or is that monthly?
It's a nine percent, you're in effect getting a nine percent loan during the installment payments. So effectively, it's monthly.
Do you know about how many people last year we had that were delinquent?
I can't answer.
Could we get a number on that?
Upon numbers, um, from the past three years, it's been less than one percent of the total tax levied. That has actually been turned over for nineteen twenty, the total tax levied was about sixty-four point six nine million or sixty-four point six. And we turned over four hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Um, and I did do an analysis for July and August of real estate tax um collections. We are as a district on pace just slightly above what we were at this point last year. So while COVID undoubtedly has had an effect, we're not really seeing that detrimental effect within our real estate tax collections for twenty twenty-one.
Wouldn't that be the case since most of our tax collections, since we're primarily a residential district, would have been escrowed?
That could be the case. I I know that some banks do require escrow. There are more and more banks that are not requiring escrow. I don't know how many of our payments are coming through a mortgage payment escrow versus the individual taxpayer.
That's fair.
Uh, so I'd like to suggest, it's, it sounds like there are, um, there are some, some pieces that we can maybe put together. In um the weekly report to summarize um some of the previous discussion. And a couple of the outstanding questions that we need clarification on. And um, and we can see from there whether there's uh an interest in pursuing some type of specific action. If some of the information we are provided. Is everybody okay with us moving on from the discussion to the next topic?
Yes.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so next, we have the superintendent's report.
If I may, just one thing very quickly. Weida Ritter was kind enough to send me the termination of the agreement. The parties acknowledge that either the client or the attorney may terminate this agreement upon ninety days written notice to the other party. And then, so there is um. And then there is a way that we would potentially be responsible for um. Payment of the one-third contingency depending upon how certain accounts are handled. But there is a uh ninety-day notification provision in the uh contract with the E L, E and M Law Group.
One quick question. As of right now, nobody should have been turned over to them for this year, correct? So we would be okay to terminate them at this point?
That is correct. You, um, taxes would not become delinquent um under the Local Tax Enabling Act until January first. So as of this point, there's nothing delinquent, even if somebody would be paying in the penalty phase, they're not yet deemed delinquent.
Thank you.
I guess, so I guess that being said, now that we know about the the ninety-day uh timeframe. And kind of, you know, back counting, uh, at what point would a decision need to be made? So I think our next scheduled meeting is the thirteenth.
It would be tonight, if you want to do the ninety days before the end of the year.
I I want to also add what it says in the agreement. Reasonable attorney fees being thirty-three and a third percent of the taxes actually collected. Shall be paid to attorney following termination of the agreement for all accounts currently. Under a payment plan arrangement wherein payments by taxpayers have been made to attorney. The previous ninety days, provided that client actually receives taxpayers' installment payments. And provided additional collection efforts by attorney are not needed in each installment payments. And that client will tender to an attorney a one-time fee of twenty dollars per active account. An active account is one with a balance of at least twenty dollars. Uh, at either the termination of the agreement or any continuation of this agreement. So um, it looks like the termination is with an additional twenty dollars per account. I have no idea what that means in terms of dollars and cents.
I think before we make a motion to terminate, that we should be able to gather that information to find out how many active accounts may be open with this attorney. So that we wouldn't have to be in. Paying out more money or having somebody else paying out more money. So let us do our due diligence before we bring this forward. And um, if if we would have to, if if we find out that we don't have an active account. Then we can certainly bring it forward and possibly just have an a a meeting where we would be making that motion and voting. Mrs. McWherter has a question.
Yes, Ed.
Just one quick question, and it doesn't need to be answered now, but could we possibly find out why we went down this road back in two thousand and eleven to begin with?
I I can't answer that question for you. This was a recommendation that former business manager Dave Zablowski. Researched and presented to the school board at the time as being a way to more quickly get dollars and cents. And he, it was actually with a different variant of a law firm at the time. And he had recommended to go that this route because he felt this was the most efficient way to get money still owing the district. That's the short form version of what I recall. I don't know if any other board member has a specific recollection. Of that uh situation, assuming anybody was on the board at the time when it was recommended.
And I I guess as a follow-up question, was it successful? Did we, were we able to get more money uh from those, those who were delinquent in their taxes?
We can gather that information, um, historically, how much we've turned over and how much they've collected on our behalf.
Excellent, thank you.
So I guess the one thing I'm not clear on at this point is the the ninety days, does that bring us to, is January first? The date we would have to, like ninety days before that?
We would normally, they would normally not receive the turnover of um the district's collections. Probably until March, in that the district does try themselves first to establish installment agreements with the taxpayers. So while taxes become delinquent January first, that's not the day the district historically has actually turned them over to E and M. E and M Law Group for the collections. So I think we have a little more uh time than Jan, than starting from January first, ninety days back.
Ms. Denicola is is absolutely correct. Actually, the renewal trigger date is March one of each annual renewal. So that's consistent with the way the agreement reads.
Okay, great. Yeah, so then I guess what I said earlier, I think still stands. We'll, we'll get some more information and we'll bring this for a future discussion.
Okay, one quick, when do you think you'll be able to have the information and bring it back? You know, with your present workload out there, so.
Ideally, this information should be easy to generate, should um E and M Law Group have the reporting available. We can probably bring it in at the next board meeting, if not the meeting thereafter. The reporting should be readily there, um, available from them.
They'd be great, thank you.
All right, great. So now we'll move to the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foose. For the con.
Sure, one last question on.
Sure. So technically, it renews in March, so we would not have to renew that contract. Is that correct, Mr. Sultanic?
No, we we would, it automatically renews by March first.
Oh, okay.
So we would have to uh exercise our rights. But we would certainly be able to do that if even on a worst-case analysis based upon what Ms. Denicola said. We wait two meetings to.
Okay.
It would make a recommendation.
I thought you said something about we had to renew it. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, as we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And um, the motion would be that the Board of School Directors approve the consent agenda as presented. These are all items that we have um discussed prior to this evening's meeting. Would be approved of the A T A M Phase Two Bash Stadium Project um change order. And um, it would be also to, um, I'm sorry. That the Board of School Directors approved the donation of a thousand dollars from the Boittertown Ole Retired School Employees Association, the BORCA. To be used by the district for their library program. And um, the approval of policies as listed, as well as um, then that's it. To approve the consent agendas presented.
A motion to approve that.
Mr. Up to Grove, Mr. Up to Grove, second. We'll proceed to the vote.
Mr. Brophy?
Approve.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Up to Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passed as nine zero. Moving on to the superintendent's itemized agenda. Under a Boittertown YMCA before and after school program for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The recommended, recommended action is that the Board of School Directors approves the YMCA before and after school program. For twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one as presented. The Boittertown YMCA has been operating an after-school childcare program at Boittertown and Washington Elementary Schools to since two thousand, two thousand and one school year. And Gilbert's Elementary School since twenty-ten. The YMCA expanded the after-school program at New Hanover Upper Frederick School. And added a before and after childcare care program at all four schools for the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve school year. The hours of operation for the before-school program will continue at six o'clock AM until the start of school. And the after-school program will immediately begin after school and run to six fifteen PM. The YMCA is proposing a continuation of the program for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year with no increase over last year. Administration is currently reviewing the school district's policy and rates related to rental of district facilities. And at this time, is not requesting an increase in rates for twenty twenty-one school year. The negotiated revenue from the YMCA for agreement was reviewed and updated last year by the legal counsel. The district solicitor has previously reviewed the agreement. There are no changes compared to previous agreements.
All right, I would need a motion for this item. Mr. Brophy. So I heard, I heard someone. For the second. Okay, so Mr. Brophy followed by a second from Ms. Hogan. Uh, comments or questions on this? Ms. Sniman?
Yes. When, when was the last time that we uh got an increase?
Am I muted? The last time that there was an increase was in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. It was of one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, according to the record that I have.
Okay. Four years ago. Our increases, our expenses to the building, our expenses for our personnel to clean the be, building. The maintenance to the bill, all increases. We don't ask our taxpayers for an increase, we just give it to them. Um, I cannot support. This is four years without an increase. I'm sorry. All of our things go up. This has got to go up too.
Does that increase that we had, if we increased their if we increased their, what we charged them, would that be passed on to the parents?
We have no idea how the Y operates.
I don't know that I could answer that specifically. I did ask if they have increased their rates to their parents. And they told me that they have levied a 1% increase to parents based upon staffing increases that they've had to put into place. That was the communication I received today.
Mr. Up to Grove.
Yes, I believe we'd have to do something because we just can't keep actually spending the time and the money to keep it clean without getting some kind of return for that. You know, a cost increase on it would be just, you know, to break even on. We have to be spending more money for people and materials to clean. I think it'd only be fair to have to pass it on.
Hogan.
Yes, thank you. I'm a bit concerned about asking for an increase during a pandemic when we already know families, you know, are struggling. So that concerns me and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My hand up.
All right, we'll go Ms. Dieroff and then Ms. Nyman and then Mr. Hemingway.
I spoke last year about this to the superintendent. And I was told that we were in the process of looking at the rentals for everybody. And they're, you know, they were going to be updated. So I was surprised that nothing has happened. And I know that there's other daycares that we no longer bus, I don't think to. I know there was a big uproar. I think one of them even closed because of not being able to do what we normally were doing for them. And as far as people struggling enough during the pandemic, I agree, but I also don't think it's fair to keep pushing the costs on the taxpayers. They have especially the elderly. When people were laid off during this pandemic, they were getting $800 a week unemployment. And the senior citizens were supposed to live on $1,000 a month. So it's time some of these charges stop getting put on all the taxpayers. I don't know how they're supposed to keep affording all this and I feel bad for the people that need to have the babysitting and so forth, but there's more places than just, just the YMCA. And we seem to cater to them. Thank you.
Can I go through the list real quick, but I did want to jump the line because Ms. Dieroff touched on something I was curious about too. Do we, do we know where the, the rental reevaluation ever ended up? I know there's been a lot of turnover since that conversation was undertaken.
I do not know where that is at. It would be with Ms. Denicola's office. I believe Ms. Ritter would be the one who would have been doing that legwork under the guidance of the CFO or in conjunction with. So I'm quite certain that it didn't move forward because we've been without our CFO since the first of July. And Ms. Denicola just joining us two weeks ago. So we've been doing everything to make sure we're paying bills and staying on the straight and narrow within our business office.
Mr. Foose, that was way before July though, that that was supposed to have taken place. So I don't know. Whatever happened to it. Sorry to butt in.
No, no, I recall it being worked on. I'm not, I don't, I don't recall where that landed either. I have Ms. Nyman, Mr. Hemingway and Ms. Denon.
And me, Mr. Foose. I just.
Okay, I'll add you, Ms. Hogan.
Thank you.
You know, I feel bad for the parents too. However, daycares put their wages up or their, their prices up as well. Our electric, I'm sure has gone up in the last four years. And they do use our electric. They do use our buildings. All that, there's a price to all of that. And we have to be physically responsible and four years not to increase them. We just, we can't keep absorbing this. We're looking for money. They need to put, start giving us some additional. And sorry, Mrs. Denicola. You're here at the wrong time, but bear with us. It's going to be some time to get all of this straightened out again, but this is something we've asked for before and it's, it's just not, it's not happening and it's got to happen.
All right, Mr. Hemingway.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't, I actually sat on the board of the YMCA many years ago. And one thing we need to remember, the YMCA isn't a for profit organization. I do believe that we need to have a good partnership with the YMCA. One thing while on the board at the YMCA, we did do an analysis of what our square footage is worth. I'm wondering if we have done that as a district, what our square footage is actually worth. And, and try to come up with a fair value. I do struggle with the idea that we, that we haven't had an increase of any kind in, in four years. I think there needs to be a discussion with the Y so that it is proportionate in what their expectations are. And honestly, what we feel is a fair value for our space. So I don't, I don't know how we determine that. I believe we hired an outside agency to help us determine square footage pricing. I don't know that as a district, we want to incur any more costs. Sometimes those kinds of studies can be expensive. But I think somehow down the line, we need, we need to evaluate what our buildings are worth, what our space is worth. And have an honest conversation with the YMCA and working in conjunction with them to at least break even and cover our costs. And if there hasn't been an increase in the last so many years, I can't see how we are not absorbing some of that cost. So I don't know if that makes too much sense, but I just want us to remember that they are providing a service to the community. Our school district is part of the community. They're not for profit. If you look at the numbers of the Y, which kind of baffled me every time we went through this, we end up with a loss, but somehow we pay for things. So I, I, as of now, I don't think I can support agreeing to this contract renewal, if that's what it is, until we have a few more concrete numbers and at least a, a more of a discussion with the Y. I don't, I hope that helps.
And just to, to kind of follow up on that, do we know as far as approval of this? The, any, any impact on timing and delivery of ongoing services and programs?
What I do know is that they are currently reaching out to parents. Yesterday, I guess it would have been for enrollment purposes as we were getting ready to open school. So they've not been in since their summer program. I do know that in my brief communication with them, as I was trying to anticipate some questions, knowing that we had moved this from the consent agenda to the itemized agenda, they had shared that that they are, you know, down with enrollment and that you know, I don't even know if they would be able to meet the the rental fee that we have attached for this year based upon their enrollment. So I will get back to them and let them know that at this point, well, depending on the direction that the board takes, you know, as we do a motion, I will communicate back to them, you know, where we're at and they'll just have to share with me where they are. What would have to happen is that their program before or after school would be at the Y. And if they're not willing to provide transportation from the Y to our schools, because we currently do not transport from New Hanover, Gilbertsville or Washington, because they're not within our area. So we're not providing midday kindergarten transportation to their half day program. That either they're going to have to, or parents are going to have to find another place for childcare. So that would be, you know, the problem right now as they're using them for before and after school. But again, they're just getting their enrollment numbers together.
I have Ms. Denon and Ms. Hogan in the queue and then I had a quick comment before hopefully we can move to the vote.
So yeah, just a, just a couple of comments. Like, like Mr. Hemingway, I also was on the the YMCA board for several years and I just think that we need to really keep in mind that the Boyertown area YMCA is a nonprofit. And they depend on the generosity of people in this community to, to raise money. So a lot of that money that we raise in this community for the Y goes to supplement childcare for people in our community. So it's been my understanding all of the years that I've been involved with the Y is they're not making money off of childcare. And this is a partnership between the school district and the YMCA. Unlike, unlike other childcare providers, which are for profit entities. So every year we have this discussion and somehow it comes back to, you know, the Y is taking advantage of us. We have a partnership with the YMCA to provide childcare to our community. And the reason we are not trying to jack up prices on the YMCA is because people in this community are subsidizing our families who cannot afford childcare. So if you have an income that is below a certain level, you get a big break on your childcare. So I really do not, I cannot wrap my head around this discussion every single year that we should be charging the Y more, we should be charging the Y more. Oh my gosh, the cleaning and, and our, and our poor taxpayers. I mean, this is, this is pennies for our taxpayers. This is a community. This is for the community, not to mention the fact as, as, as Mrs. Torsia just said, the YMCA, their enrollment is down, so they're probably losing money. And whether they're a nonprofit or not, they probably are hurting as well. And they're probably dipping into that, that fundraising amount to, to cover some of these expenses. And the other thing that I think we, we forget is that we have a swim team and we have had an agreement with the Y and I'm pretty sure it's still there that we use their pool and they do not charge us. And Ms. Torsia, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there, but renting pool space is also expensive. And Mr. Palladino would need to add to that, Mrs. Denon. Okay. So, so the YMCA, when I was on the board, at least, they were not charging us for the pool and for us to use the pool. So again, it was a back and forth, give and take partnership with the YMCA. And you know, and again, if it was a for profit entity, I would, I would absolutely agree that we need to be charging them a fair amount. But it's a nonprofit entity. So I, I just cannot, you know, wrap my head around this charging them more. And the only, the only, the busing is also an issue because we don't bus. As far as, as far as I, what you just said, we don't bus anymore from either of the schools. And I think the YMCA is obviously paying for the, for the busing. So the only school that they, that they bus is Colbertdale for transportation. So to either of the branches as far as, unless it's changed since I got off the board. So, um, you know, I just, this is to me, to me, having the YMCA pay us so we can have before and after childcare at school is, is a really, really great thing for this community. And I know a lot of people in this community, including Mr. Hemingway, who have given hours and hours of their expertise and their time sitting on the YMCA board and raising thousands and thousands of dollars. So we can subsidize these children in our community whose parents have to go to work to earn a living, to put food on the table, but they cannot afford childcare. And yes, there are people who use the Y childcare because it's a very accredited and, and has a good reputation as before and after school care. And they do pay full price and it is expensive. But there's plenty of children in this community who are getting a break on childcare because their parents cannot afford the full price. Many of those are single parents. So again, I just quite do not I don't quite understand the, the discussion. I am fine with, with, with this price. I totally am fine with us looking at what the true cost of our space is. And, but you know, I'm not going to support bringing a for profit group, childcare group into our school. So we can get $100,000 out of them and then, you know, the, the, the parents who truly need subsidized childcare have nowhere to go.
Next up, Ms. Hogan and then Ms. Dieroff.
Thank you. So I agree with both, both Mrs. Denon and, and Mr. Hemingway about the value of the YMCA. I wanted to ask just, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't have children in before or after care program. So I wanted to ask that the YMCA would have the capability of busing the children?
They do have the capability, but I understand that they're not busing this year due to COVID reasons. You know, just, you I guess the, the additional responsibility of cleaning their vehicles or maintaining, you know, them. I'm not sure exactly. So please, I'm just saying that I understand that they're, they're not and it was COVID related.
Okay, but that's through their own choice. That has nothing to do with us. And generally they, they would be busing those children.
For kindergarten, they would be the, with regard to, just for kindergarten that I.
Okay. Um, that's all. I just wanted that clarity. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Dieroff.
I just want to have clarification. If I understood it correctly, the remark was just made that they were tired of hearing the Ys take advantage of us. Did I understand that right?
Yes, I think, I think.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I heard it right because this is how rumors get farted and I'm tired of it. We are not saying that the Y is taking advantage of us. We're, we're again, having a discussion. And remarks like you just made, or what goes through the community, and I'm tired of it. There was never anything said about the, about the Y taking advantage of us. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Surveying the room, the other hand, to comments online. Mr. Dieroff, or yes, Mr. Dieroff, Mr. Up to Grove, sorry.
I'm, I'm not saying I charge them $100,000 a year like somebody just said. I'm just saying that, you know, our costs went up a little bit or a lot. It does, you know, whatever it went up, I feel responsible to have to charge that on to the Y. If they're charging their people more, I mean, just reasonable, but at the same time, the taxpayer shouldn't have to burden us all the time.
All right, real quick before moving to, to a vote, I, I want to say kind of straddling the fence that I agree with a lot of what was said by everybody. And I guess that's the, the difficult part in this. They do provide a great service. It does help subsidize childcare for a lot of folks in need. And similarly, just like any other entity, we should be evaluating our needs and our costs and what, what's a reasonable price. So, but I, I think each year we, we have a similar discussion. Given where we're at in time relative to the school year we're trying to pull off here. I, I believe that we, we need to proceed, but I do think moving forward as, as we look up kind of where maybe we got on reviewing the, the rental fees and, and that whole process. This be included in that scope going forward to at least evaluate it. That's, that's just my opinion of it at this time. So I think now we can move to our vote.
I would just follow up with the comment that you do have a number of families that do rely on this service. And so I just want to be able to give them, you know, ample amount of time, which won't be a lot because school does begin K to 12 next week for our A B model for students. So parents who may have been in need of before and after-school care, that relied on the care through the Y at these buildings, they are going to be in a pinch at this point to be able to, you know, find another way of having their children being cared for before and after school. So I, I'm just presenting because we're just starting to open. We didn't want to present this contract, you know, prior. But just wanted that to be, you know, mentioned. So, you know, Ms. Nyman has a
All right, I was trying to wrap things up, but I still have more hands. I have Mr. Hemingway and then Ms. Nyman.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, I, I guess for now, since we're already in, into the game, it's, it's fair to support what's suggested. But I do, as you just had mentioned, I do think we need to go and add this to our evaluation of what our rental space is worth. Not that we want to be unfair, but we want to be fair. You know, charge what is adequate to at least cover our costs. So just moving forward, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, for now, you know, let's get this year, this is continue rolling so that parents have some kind of an idea of where they're going. If things are out of proportion, and I guess we'll have to absorb those costs. But I think this is something that we do need to look down the line with all our rental spaces. And I, I think it would be time well spent. So, thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
Yeah, it seems like every year, we keep kicking this can down the road. And then, then the next year, it comes up again. I cannot support this without doing our due diligence to our, everybody in this community. I feel bad for the parents that need it. But there's a lot of parents out there that need daycare. There's a lot of parents that need to get back to work. And they have to be home watching their kids. So it's not just them, it's everybody. And if we would have did our due diligence last year, instead of pushing it down to this year, we wouldn't be in our shoes this year. So I cannot support it at this time.
Ms. McWherter.
I just wanted to reiterate what you said and what Mr. Hemingway said, that we need to follow up with, with information, but I, but I do think we need to move forward as well as what Mrs. Torsia said. I think we should probably point out that I do believe the, the Y is responsible for their own COVID cleaning. Is that correct?
During the summer program, they were responsible. During the school year, we have not asked them to do that, and I did follow up with them. And that wasn't something that they were, you know, putting into place. The places that they are using are going to have to be cleaned by our second shift custodian anyway. That it's not that we're putting them in space that's been unused. They typically use our cafeteria areas. So I would believe that at the end of the day, at 6:15, when they leave, that that would be the spot that would be cleaned at that time and not prior, so that it wouldn't be double work. I would have to, you know, speak with Mr. Drescher and his custodial staff to make sure that what I'm sharing with you right now is accurate. But to me, that would make sense that you wouldn't double clean an area.
Okay, so I just ask that we not leave this till next year and that we start working on it with the Y and to become an appropriate fee for next year.
New leadership, and if we're all here, we can follow through and, and, and work that out for everybody. Yes.
All right, I have my hand up.
Mrs. Deroff.
I'm sorry to ask again, I just want to make sure I understand this. So the Y is not willing to clean, the Y is not willing to bus the kids, and they want the same prices they had last year to this, to know them probably talking to the parents already about it. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is what you're understanding. My understanding, Mrs. Deroff, is that the Y was beginning to see if, what their enrollment would look like to let the parents know that, you know, there would be that possibility of this program being in place. So they began, I believe, according to what I was communicating with, that they were going to start their enrollment with parents yesterday, looking to see if they could even support it.
So they, they, they just assumed we weren't going to raise the rent.
I would not be able to answer that. I can't, I can't answer what anyone assumes. You and I talked about that.
If they're talking to the parents and, and they're telling us they don't want an increase, they're assuming that we're going to go along with it again.
It sounds like a good assumption.
Thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
You know, I can understand them not cleaning in the afternoon, but I think they should be doing some disinfecting in the morning after they're done. Because now we're bringing all of our other kids in there. And I think that should be their responsibility in the morning.
So Ms. Nyman, if I could, the students that would be coming in would be those students that are only there for the A B. So there wouldn't be a cross-contamination of students coming in on those days, right now, as it stands. So childcare before and after school would only be for students who are A students on that Monday and Tuesday. So as they would come in, that area would be an area that they would use for lunch or whatever else might go on in that spot. So, yeah.
Student-wise, it wouldn't be, but what about the adults that are there watching them? Contamination. Sorry.
I have no response for that.
Miss, Miss, Mr. Foose, I have my hand up too. I don't know if you saw it.
That's contamination, and they should be responsible to clean that room before they leave. Because now we're bringing other kids in there. And if one of them has it, one of the adults, they should be
Sorry, Ms. Denon.
Yeah, um, just, I, I just, if Mr. Palladino is on, does he have any idea? I mean, is, is the pool rental like, just like basically nothing, so it's not, it's a wash? Or like, or is the pool rental, you know, a decent amount? So in other words, if we severed our relationship with the Y, or we decided to raise it, and they just said, yeah, we'll just walk away, would we be able to, you know, would it cost us money then to have to pay them for pool rental? Or would we just not have a swim team? Or, or is it just such a nominal fee that it wouldn't matter?
Right now, the, the current agreement with the Y is, since we have this agreement, they have this agreement with the school district, they do not charge us anything for any type of pool rental, lifeguards, anything that has to do with the practices or a meet. Now, with that being said, I did speak to the Y about two weeks ago. And under current COVID regulations that they need to follow, we're not sure if they will have space for the swim team this coming year, depending on, you know, regulations they need to follow. But that could change at any time also. So we're, we're working with the Y to see if we can get some space this year for, for a swim team. But as of right now, we, we don't know if, if that will be in the works or not. And that's something that we're looking for.
Ballpark figure, Mr. Palladino. If we had to go out and rent the Y, rent a pool for our swim team, like ballpark, like what would it be?
Oh my gosh.
Honestly, I'm not sure because we've never had to do it. My guess, from what other schools are going through, a few thousand for space and, and lifeguards. But I, I couldn't give you a number if that few thousand was five or 10. I'm not sure without having to go out there and get prices from it.
Okay, that's good enough. I just, I just wanted, I just had no idea, so I just was curious.
Can I call for a vote?
Yes, thank you. I was about to suggest the same thing. So we have, we, so we've, we've had someone call for the vote.
Yes, we had Mr. Brophy made the motion and Ms. Hogan second. So should I call, should I take the vote?
I actually need the motion, but that's
They're, they're talking about the original motion, the item.
Yes, you can poll the board.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. McWherter?
Are we pulling the board to see if we're ready to go on to the vote, or are we voting?
Mrs. McWherter, your vote is a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of a revised board meeting calendar. The recommended action is that the Board of School Directors approves the revised board meeting calendar as presented. And I have provided a color copy for each of you. And anyone that is not present, I will make sure it is sent out to you as well, so that you can have it in the color-coded copy.
I made motions for this. Ms. McWherter, motions?
Second.
All right, Ms. Mrs. Deroff, seconds. Comments or questions on the calendar? All right, we'll move.
Yes. My communication in the newsletter was that people should hold Tuesdays as, as a date that they should try not to plan things for in the event that we would need to have another meeting put into place. So I had to ask for a hold. But right now, we are presenting that we'll have two meetings for October, two meetings for November. There would be three meetings in December. The first would be a board reorganization. Our committee of the whole would be December 8th, and then our board voting meeting would be the 15th. This is just through the end of this year.
Okay, move ahead to a vote.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Next, I would like to present amendment number two to employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent. The recommended action is that the Board of School Directors approves amendment number two to employment agreement with Assistant Superintendent. As a result of the reorganization resolution adopted August 11th, 2020, which occurred due to the resignation of Dr. Dina Bedden, Mr. Stouts' contract needed to be amended to reflect these changes. The amended agreement was developed by our solicitor.
All right, seeking a motion?
Denon moves.
I have Ms. Nyman with the original motion and Ms. Denon with a second. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, proceed to a vote, please.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes nine, zero.
Next is item D, COVID-19 mitigation metrics. That the Board of School Directors approved the COVID-19 mitigation metrics as presented. The COVID-19 mitigation metric will be the tool that Boyertown Area School District will use if we need to determine the transition to a full remote instructional model as a district or as a specific building. The metrics was vetted by our physician that has been working with our school supervising nurse and is very similar to what other school districts in our county have also adopted.
All right, seeking a motion? Ms. McWherter, Mr. Updugrove, seconds. Any comments or questions on this item? Ms. McWherter, followed by Ms. Nyman.
I have my hand up, Brandon. I don't know if you see it.
So the, there was, there was a request, are we able to get this? Can we open the actual document on the, on the screen so folks at home can see?
Mrs. Yeah, there we go.
All right, thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Nyman. Ms. McWherter?
So a couple things. One, initially, we were looking for, I have echoes, and I'm not sure if it's just for myself, or just take that off. What's going to happen is that we are going to be talking to the Department of Health each and every time that somebody gets sick, and we are following their recommendations.
That is correct, Mrs. McWherter. This is just a guide so that we have something to put out for parents to understand. But in the event that any positive cases are identified in our school district, we immediately go to the Department of Health, and then they will get back to us, and they will dictate really to us where we have to make changes, or if we have to close a building, if we have to just close a grade level. They are the authority.
I had a second question, and, and I've asked you this before, and I'm not completely comfortable with it. Factors that will be used to transition to a fully remote instructional mode as a specific building, again, we said that that's something that's decided by the Department of Health. If we have 5% of positive cases, and I'm just wondering where that 5% of positive cases comes from?
Baseline of the tool that we are used, using for the instructional model as dictated by the Department of Health and the Department of Education, telling us where we are staying, whether we're in a low, moderate, or significant. And that is that range there.
It's that positivity rate?
Yes.
So is this positivity rate for the county, or is this positivity rate, it, it seems like it's with the building?
It, it would be a positivity rate for the county that we're using. The building, that would be entirely too high because my experience with school districts neighboring us, where there have been positive cases, it's only taken two or three for them to determine that the building needs to be closed, which would definitely be much lower than that 5%. So that, that is really as a basis of, of either county.
All right, so I, I guess I'd like to have that clarified in the, in the metrics, that this is the 5%, 5% positivity rate of the county that can be linked.
Okay, yeah.
With, um, for the, the people that made the motion, is that, are you proposing an amendment?
Yes, I'm, I think it needs clarification.
I will just add that, and then I can either bring back for, to be ratified, you know, based upon that.
Well, I think, I think we can, and Mr. Sultanic might want to weigh in, but I, I believe we can do a friendly amendment to, to just accept it pending the, the change that Ms. McWherter had pointed out.
Right, I, I would just like to, to save a 5% positivity rate within the county that can be linked within the building defined.
So just to, just to classify that, or to hone in on that a little bit more, are we, are we speaking of the county? Like, we, obviously, we're considered a Berks County school, but are we talking about the county that the specific building is in? Or are we talking about just anything pertaining to Berks County?
I'm really being dictated by I'm really being dictated by Berks County. I do look at the Montgomery County rates as well to, you know, give me an indication of where we're at. And quite honestly, if Montgomery County would move to a rate, I would have to evaluate and find out if that means that we would have to close being that we are a Berks County school and not recognized as a Montgomery County school, even though we do cross that line. So I can just leave within the county and not identify a county and use that just across the board because I think that's a fair number.
I think that works.
Yeah.
I think leave it as written.
Who, for, sorry, who are the, who are the original, the people who made the original motion?
Me.
Ms. McWherter, and then the second came from?
Ms. Strub.
Ms. Strub. So I guess the your proposal then would be to amend that original motion to instead proceed with this document with an update to clarify that the 5% is based on the county. And Mr. Updegrove, would you agree to that amendment? Okay, all right, so that, that is the motion and amendment that will be voting on them. Any other comments?
I have my hand up, Brandon.
Okay, good. Yeah, Ms. Denon and then Ms. Hogan.
So I basically had the same concern that Mrs. McWherter had, and I think if we, if we say 5% positivity rate per county, you know, in the county, that would be, I think that would be sufficient. I don't think it necessarily matters if we spell out which county because I think both counties are, are pretty much going with those same metrics. It's not like Berks County is saying, oh, we're 10% and Montgomery County is saying 3%, you know? So I think, I think that's reasonable and I would also feel more comfortable because the way it's reading now, I thought the same thing. I'm thinking, oh, wow, we don't have to do anything until we get 5% in the building that we can trace it to. So I think that's very reasonable.
Ms. Hogan?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say that I will be voting no to this, and I wanted to explain why, just so people, you know, had an understanding. I think the 10% positivity rate for both Berks and Montgomery, the factors, under factors that will be used to transition to a fully remote instructional model as a district. I feel that that's entirely too high and that, you know, it could create they could create a dangerous atmosphere within, if that's the positivity rate for the counties, we could have real problems in the school with transmission and spread. So I can't support this, but thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, we will move to a vote on the amended motion.
Okay, Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
No.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Fuze?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one. And last part of the agenda is personnel and that the Board of School Directors approve, ratify the items as listed.
All right, need a motion for the personnel item?
Hogan motions.
All right, I have Mr. Updegrove with the motion and Ms. Hogan with a second. Any comments or questions on any of the personnel items before us? I see some hands left over. I don't know if they're new, if they're new comments or left over from.
Sorry, Brandon, I'll put mine down.
No problem. Okay, then we will move forward to the vote.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWherter?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mrs., excuse me, Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Fuze?
Yes.
Motion passed nine zero. And that is all that I have to present at this time.
Great. So next, we have old business. I don't believe there's any old business.
No old business.
Followed by public comment two, which again, we did not have anyone signed up.
My understanding is we did have somebody sign up, Mrs. Kincaid, for the second public comment, I believe. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, my apologies. Are we able to bring that person over?
Yes, her name is Heather Stamen.
All right.
And I am looking for her right now.
And while we bring Ms. Stamen in, I will read our.
Okay, Mr. Fuze, she is now a panelist.
Okay, so Ms. Stamen, just one, one moment.
Okay.
So on behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyer Town Area School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASD Board Policy 006. This document is available at the meeting and on the BASD website. Participants properly registered on the signup sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. We can skip over public comment one because we didn't have that. We value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, the superintendent or a member of their staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals wishing to speak again. I don't know if Heather will want to jump in line a bunch of times. And we do record our meetings. They're on our website and YouTube. If you choose to record them yourself, please do so in a non-disruptive way, uses materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. Ms. Stamen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Fuze. My name is Heather Stamen. I am a parent of two children in the district and I live in Douglas Township, Montgomery County. So there's been several discussions in past meetings about the cleaning protocols and availability of cleaning products and hand sanitizer. But there's been little discussion about what methods are going to be used for improving the air quality within our buildings. In the health and safety plan that was approved by the board, the following was listed under the other cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, and ventilation practices to quote, recommend ventilating all classrooms and common areas when available possible using windows. Recommend, recommend air circulation patterns that push inside, air out towards open windows, end quote, which follows the CDC's strategies and consideration of increasing outdoor air ventilation by opening windows and doors when weather conditions allow. I've heard from multiple sources that this is not being done within our buildings. If the ventilation methods are being changed, the community should be informed of this change and the reasoning behind it. On another note, I do recall that in a summer board meeting that the maintenance team was replacing filters. Are they being replaced with the MRF 13 or higher rated filters as per ASHRAI for minimum filtration efficiency? And then also, are there any ultraviolet light products installed in our buildings HVAC systems? If not, is this something that will be recommended to invest in the future? The company I work for has installed air scrubbers in all of our offices. I also have one installed in my home and company vehicles to improve the quality of air my coworkers are breathing and to keep us as healthy as possible. Not only would these products be a potential preventative measure against the spread of coronavirus, they would also help reduce sick building syndromes with norovirus, flu, and cold strike. Improving the indoor air quality in all of our buildings will help staff and students breathe better air, reduce illnesses, and keep our buildings healthy for years to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we will proceed to our board comments. Anybody, I see Ms. Denon's hand up. Ms. Denon?
Sorry, Ms. Let me take it down.
Okay, Mr. Brophy?
We had a lot of discussion about the why and the charging, not charging. I'm not sure exactly if we actually make money on that or we, do we loot, do we, is it a break even proposition? Is it profit? Do we lose money? I think we need to look at that and that's something to go. Also, we got to remember, as you've said, we're dealing with a nonprofit is performing a service for the community. And I'm, I'm a little concerned right now. I heard they might not open. And that's, I would believe a lot of our, a lot of our more needy people have to have that service and I think we need to get that information out to them as quickly as possible. I voted yes real quickly on this to, to accept it. A lot of it based on the fact that it's, it's, I believe it's too late to sit there and say, no, we're not going to do it this year. That's, that's part of why I voted yes so quickly. I think issues like this, we need to get to sooner. And that probably puts it on the why to get to it sooner. It's not, it's not on us. They need to get with us sooner and talk to us about what's going to go on and how they're going to do it. So I'd like discussions with them to start earlier in upcoming years. But, you know, rate pricing is important, but it also has to be tempered with the fact that they are a nonprofit and we have to work with them because we would like them to stay there unless somebody has a alternative that we can put in their place and take over for them. So I'm just concerned, I don't want to, I don't want to, our parents right now are getting pushed around a lot. There's a lot of people that are trying to get back to work and I think we have to be careful as to not add more onto their, onto their plate. And that's all.
Ms. McWherter?
Just to piggyback on to what Mr. Brophy was just saying, there's a lot of other groups that also use our schools, Boy Scouts, Bible clubs, basketball, some of the basketball groups. And again, these are all nonprofit and they're all part of the community, you know, do we charge them? Okay, and, and.
Yes.
And also would, would, yeah. And who cleans up after them? I guess, you know, that doesn't have to be answered right now, but. Okay, that's just my thoughts.
And our buildings are being used for voting again this year, is that clear?
I wasn't, I did not receive confirmation on that. I've been reported that there's a potential. I don't know if they will, knowing that we have students, but they may because if they're having a shortage on polls, poll people to work the polls, that the reason why they brought them into our Montgomery County schools before was because they brought all the different churches, all the different regions into one spot, one, one shop voting. So I do not have information whether or not, as a confirmation, as to whether or not will be used. I will report that out once I am informed.
Great, thank you.
It may be only a day in advance because that's about what I got the last time.
I have Ms. Hogan and then Ms. Nyman.
I have my hand up.
And then Ms. Dieroff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuze. I'm just a real quick question. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to, I don't remember actually. Is Election Day a school holiday and if it's not, and our buildings are being used, will we be closing schools to students that day?
Election Day is not a school holiday. Our students would be in session. And what they have done in the past is they would be placed in an area that only that they would not have to walk through the building, that there would be an entrance that would not be near students. And then they are responsible for providing the cleaning after they are done.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Nyman?
That was kind of my question also. I remember when they were that they were responsible for cleaning. But my concern is, are students anywhere in that area or are they blocked off?
If, if we are informed that they are planning to use our facility, then we would have to identify like we did in the past an area and the gymnasium, for instance, I am thinking of Middle School East because that was one place that we knew that there was a door where they could come in and leave without having to go through the building. So gym would have to look different that day for our students, absolutely. As far as the other two elementary schools, I believe they may have used similar locations, but again, we would have to identify a spot within the building. We would have to dictate to them. We would also have to be mindful that it is handicap accessible. But we would, you know, be working with them and saying, you know, this is where, you know, it would work. Obviously cafeterias would not be a spot. But again, I would have to evaluate. It would be New Hanover and Gilbertsville were the two other buildings that were, were used. I don't know if the Berks County side will be coming in. We were not a school district that was used for Berks County voting. But I did, there was communication that was shared with Berks County superintendents with regard to the upcoming election. So again, we would have to be working with them to, to make sure. Now, I can communicate in the weekly report, you know, if we feel that it would not be in our best interest to have face-to-face instruction that day because of our schools being used, then that's something that we could present and we could potentially make that a virtual day or a Mr. Stout, what are we calling flexible instructional day? So that we would make sure that our students were, you know, in a safe place, but I'm not sure that we'll have to come to that.
Mrs. Torch, I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me just.
Excuse me, I was talking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was my time.
I just want to clarify that the, that this discussion doesn't really need to continue because Montgomery County, on their voter website, they have put all of the, all of the, all of the polling places and none of them are schools. I think they're going back, I think at least in Montgomery County, I can't speak for Berks, but while we were having this discussion, I quick went on, went on to Montgomery County and it looks like it's Shepherd of the Hills, like churches. It looks like it's going back to where they, they were originally, at least, and I've only been able to check Douglas and New Hanover. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Ms. Nyman.
Well, we do have a thing where we're supposed to wait our turn. Um, so I just, I just want to make sure our students are 100% protected because we are for our students and our students come first. Thank you.
Absolutely. I tried to battle that last year, Ms. Nyman, but I lost. I went pretty far up the top of the ladder too, but being the assistant superintendent just did not rank up there.
All right, next I have Ms. Dieroff.
Yes, I just wanted to, a remark was made that we rent to other groups and do they, do they clean and so forth. I just want to be mindful of the fact that other years, we didn't have this epidemic. Pandemic, I'm sorry. And so it probably, nobody cleaned before. So you can't compare what we did or what happened before with other groups. I mean, let's, let's, folks, let's get real about this. Thank you.
Surveying the room again, looking online. Oh, yep, we have a additional comment from, one we love to hear from, Mr. Stout.
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't put a thank you out there to Mrs. Chambers for all the hard work that she's done. I didn't want to go unnoticed that she is a resignation tonight and she's moving on to, to a new position, but with all the transitions within our district and trying to keep our human resources head above water, she has been vital in that process. So I just wanted to make sure we had a recognition for the hard work that she's put forth in all of this transition with staffing and everything over the past few years. Her dedication and hard work has been, not gone unnoticed. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Stout.
Yeah, I think that was important. The only, the only comment that I have to make is having, you know, observing my students on, or my, my children online and now some of their friends are back in the classrooms. It's on the one hand neat to observe. It's also, I, I imagine a new challenge for a lot of these teachers. So I continue to, to be in awe and appreciative of all the work that they're doing. I think we're headed hopefully in the right direction and I just ask everyone. I think we're headed hopefully in the right direction and I just ask everyone in our community to continue to be safe and stay diligent.
Thank you, Mr. Foose. And I did, I was remessin' in saying that first grade has joined us yesterday and so today was day two for the A group. So we now have our special education students, our kindergarten students and first grade in our schools. So Mr. Stout and I have been out again checking in. You know, hats off to our teachers, they are doing a marvelous job. It is challenging kindergarten. I can't even imagine, you know, having those little guys in front of you and then having those other little guys on the video. So my team is working diligently to bring, you know, all of our kindergarten through fifth grade students back on a more permanent basis, on a permanent basis. And so we are, you know, working, you know, moving ahead and hoping that we can, you know, provide an update on what we're going to roll out. We will target a small presentation on the 13th just to be able to inform the board as to where we're at and so that we can, you know, go ahead and let everybody know as well as the community that, you know, we're getting closer and closer every day. So it's been really great to see kids and that's how the teachers are, are feeling as well, in the flesh.
All right, great, so with that, I'll move to upcoming meeting dates. And now that we've approved our new calendar, our next meeting will be a committee of the whole on October 13th and a voting meeting on October 27th. And be sure to check the website for any other updates and for the calendar. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Nyman moves.
Sniman, followed by a second from Ms. McWherter. With that, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.